This meeting has been called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, The Star Leisure, and the Highland Park Planet on January 4th, 2023, and was posted on Borough Hall website at www.hbborough.com and on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. In addition, notice of this meeting via Zoom was emailed to the Home News Tribune, The Star Leisure, The Highland Park Planet on May 12th, 2023, and was posted on Borough Hall website at www.hbborough.com and on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, on May 12th, 2023, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and my right of council chambers. Tonight, we have some special guests with us, and I'm going to ask Ben from the Boy Scouts, if he could lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Blackface, Scout salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two.
Roll call.
Mayor Foster.
Here.
Councilwoman Canavera.
Councilman George.
Here.
Councilman Hale.
Here.
Council President Hirsch.
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Tohan. Councilman Pistonik.
Here.
Borough Attorney Schneer.
Here.
Borough Administrator Hoobair.
Here.
Council members, do you have any questions on the agenda?
No questions there.
No man.
At this time, it is my honor to acknowledge Eagle Scout Zachary Hale, Councilmember Hale's son, and I'm going to read the proclamation, and then I'm going to ask Councilmember to come down and to present. And it says, whereas Zachary, a member of Highland Park Boy Scout Troop 55, received the rank of Eagle Scout on April 25th, 2023, and whereas Zachary has been actively involved in scouting for 12 years, joining PAC-5 in 2011 and through 55 in 2015, and whereas Zachary has earned over 20 merit badges, including ones in cooking, chemistry, climbing, citizenship in the community, first aid, lifesaving and disability awareness, whereas Zachary has served the troop on both School Patrol leaders and Senior Patrol leaders. Zachary Eagle Scout project was to build the first outdoor dining parklet in Highland Park, and you all have benefited, all of us have benefited from that, currently on Fourth Avenue. He organized his friends, family, and fellow Boy Scouts to design and construct the dining platform, which assisted several local North Port businesses with the assistance of several North Port businesses by providing additional seating during and after the COVID pandemic. His Eagle Scout project took over 50 hours of community service to accomplish this goal. And whereas Zachary, a freshman at the University of Pittsburgh, where he is studying biomedical engineering and is considering a career in medicine. Now, therefore, I, LC Foster, may of the Borough of Highland Park, do hereby proclaim Zachary Hale, distinguished Highland Park resident, and whereas recognize and admire his hard work and dedication, congratulating him on his many achievements and look forward to seeing his future accomplishments. In witness, I have on to set my hand on the 21st day of November, 2023, Mayor LC Foster. Councilmember here. I know you are eager to help us, help me out to make this happen.
I do, sir.
I was going to say some words, but I'm not.
He finished the documents with us this evening, and he came just to see this presentation and to congratulate you as well, Senator. Don't be curious if you were.
I just, I needed this. You know, you read the paper, you see all the negative things. Sad. Be proud. All I can say to the family is be proud. This year, I mean, what, 20 you told me? Eighteen. Eighteen. In eighteen years, that resume? My God. And obviously, you have learned from examples. So God bless you. We need more like you, and you have already accomplished, and just, just. As I said, I needed this. Thank you. Thanks for letting me.
And I just want to thank the troops for coming out and supporting our town and to be here, especially during a pandemic, to help all of us out. It would be one of the benefits of being here. Thank you.
There's ice cream out there for everybody who wants to join. I'll be out in one second.
Okay, you want to get a two-minute recess, so you can go out.
Ice cream, two minutes?
I'm being generous. I get two minutes and let Dad go out and enjoy with us.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Proud Dad. Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you, Senator.
Always great to see you.
Happy Thanksgiving, Reverend. Hopefully, not until meetings. On day one.
I'm not going to share how long it really is.
Right there.
Anyone who wants ice cream can do it.
I'm going to have plenty on Thursday, so I'll need to start early.
Sorry, everybody. I got my dad pinned. I'm crying.
Well, now that we're back in session, approval of minutes. Motion to approve minutes distributed October 10th, 2023, regular session and executive session in October 24th, 2023, regular session and executive session.
I'll move that one, too.
Can we get a second?
Sorry.
Council reports.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call.
Councilman George.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Abstain on the 24th, yes to the other.
Councilman Hale.
Yes.
Council President Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilman Pistonik.
Yes.
Council reports. Okay, I'm going to start off because I am super excited, and I have some really delightful and uncommon news to share. It's really good. Over the summer, I had been working with an estate attorney. And the reason why I was working with his attorney is that a longtime Highland Park resident by the name of Leonard Kushner, he was a former police officer, and he retired from the Police Department in January 1988. And he lived here in town on South Second Avenue. After decades after he retired, he passed away in 2022. And he was a very generous man. And one of the things that Leonard loved more than anything else in the world was his mother. Yes, Leonard loved and cherished his mom. He did not have any family. And once he left the Police Department, he became a day trader, and he traded. And after we read the will and the will was probate, he left us some really awesome and great news. Well, what Leonard did was, he left the Borough of Highland Park. He bequeathed, because he had no family, he bequeathed the Borough of Highland Park to different departments various sums of money. And I'll just give you an idea of the different department that he left money to. Highland Park Police Department, he left money to purchase three new vehicles. The Fire Department, a brand-new fire truck. The First Aid Squad, a brand-new ambulance. Highland Park Community Food Country, $350,000 for people who are facing food insecurities. Highland Park Give-a-Who, $250,000 for camps and scholarships and food distribution. To our local public library, $375,000. He left additional funds to Highland Park Public Schools, some borough-based groups such as the Children with Autism. And all the gifts were given in memory of his mother, Ida Kushner. All of these gifts will be noted, and you'll see a lot of name of Ida Kushner around the Borough. And this is because he left this generous sum of money to the town, and which had to form 501(c)(3) organizations. But I was happy that I worked with the attorney to give the town this wonderful. I think this is a season of giving, and he really made it happen during the season of giving. And I think it's a gift that's going to give back over and over and over again. He was very generous to his mother. He left her this, and he wants her to be remembered and to be cherished. And we're going to have a lot of wonderful things happening in our town and for various departments and children who are marginalized are going to get scholarships and a host of other things. So I would like to ask each and every one of you to give Leonard Kushner a round of applause. Thank you. Park Deli. As many of you know, that when that Park Deli has stepped up to the plate, and they have helped us out with providing produce and dairy and everything else during, while we do not have a supermarket in place. Park Deli's expanded. Papa Gallows is next door, and they're expanding from where they are. They're going to be opening up, expanding into that area, which is great news. I'm really happy to announce that. But with that announcement, I have a downside. Quick check, who's been in town forever is leaving. They're leaving because they have changed, quick, quick check. Corporate have changed their model, and their model is for bigger stores with gas stations. We cannot accommodate a gas station, so they are leaving because they want to be in places where they can make a lot more money, and they have gas stations, so they can have lots of gas pumping. And similar to the big-box stores, what most of big-box stores are doing. So unfortunately, Quick Check will be leaving, but we'll be working hard tirelessly. I know Councilmember Hale and I are going to be like, really working, and all of us, to get a new replacement, to get a new store in that area, because we want to address those needs. Unfortunately, it seems like that's the way of the world, that everybody wants bigger and bigger and bigger. And small towns like us really have to work hard and to keep our town vibrant and to shop locally and create development that will be sustainable and that will stay in our town. And on that note, I have another pleasant news to share. I met with the new owners of our supermarket space, and I'm happy to share that they have signed all the paperwork. The owner, the new owner, is out of town this week. Will be back next weekend. We're going to be meeting. And at that time, we will be doing a press release on what supermarket is going to be filling that space. So I think, again, that's awesome news, that we're going to be having a supermarket in Highland Park in short order. I can't say the name of it yet, because I want to do this jointly with the new owner. So I will keep you updated. That is my report, and now I'm going to move into council reports, and I'm going to ask Councilmember George, do you have any report?
I do, Mayor. Thank you. And thank you for that good news. First of all, to everyone watching, listening, and everyone here. Thanksgiving greetings. I hope your holiday is delightful, but also safe. On a more subtle note, Council President Hirsch and I attended the funeral memorial for Mary Denver, a longtime volunteer here in town who was instrumental in many of the committees she served on, in particular, in relation to the environment. And just as a note, Mary was the first volunteer that I met when I took office. And I met her at the Native Plant Sanctuary, where she worked tirelessly to beautify that area. And I learned quite a lot about the town, and I've always said, our volunteers are some of my best sources of information. And we literally sat on a log in the Native Plant Sanctuary and learned how to deal with some of the environmental questions that we had. My regards to her family. With regard to the library, as the mayor has noted, there's been a bequest from the Kushner Estate for 375, which is earmarked for the meeting room enhancements, including accessibility, digital projection, carpeting and painted walls. It'll include a paved patio and programming space at the north Sixth Avenue entrance, improvements to the meeting room, kitchenette, and restroom, and improvements to the main public restrooms as funding allows, in conjunction with the State Library Grant Program, and the renovations are ongoing at the time. Michael Goblish, our executive director, is here at every meeting, and the staff are excited with this development, as well as the progress of the library renovation. They're looking at a target date of February 2024 for reopening the library space, but it's very flexible at this time, so we'll have to stay tuned and see how things go. With regard to public safety, I'm happy to announce that one of our better shared service agreements for transferring dispatch over to Rutgers Dispatch Center is moving along very rapidly. On the agenda tonight is funding for building renovations that are necessary to make the lobby reception area personnel free so that it's accessible 24/7 and 365 from Rutgers Dispatch without any effort. This will enable people to enter the area without having to perform any switching or operation of any devices and automatically signal through the Rutgers for further entry. The updates going include cameras throughout the building so that the entire building is monitored as well. Also pleased to note that three of the four full-time dispatchers were accepted by Rutgers Dispatch, and the fourth full-time dispatcher has placed with another dispatch area that they wanted to go to. So the program has been working very well. A public safety committee recently discussed the no-parking change at the Urban School, which seems to have cleared up a lot of traffic problems in the area. It also discussed whether moving forward with commercial parking. At this time, we don't feel that the ordinance changes they seem to provide. What good news that we shared at the public safety meeting was that officers have increased the patrol in the Crowes Road area, and it appears that some of the speeding has been reduced significantly, which a number of residents have commented on. Other than that, I note that SWAC has submitted its budget request for 2024, and foremost on the proposal is the reinstitution of the bike rodeo, which we used to hold prior to the pandemic. And this year, 2024, I should say, they're planning to include the bike maintenance program, which was so successful at the recent farmer's market. The Fire Department will be out at the tree lighting event this Saturday. Councilman Hale has much more to say about the event, but I do have to note that Santa will be present by the fireplace. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Postonie.
Thank you, Mayor. So I am covering the Department Center, the Arts and Recreation Committee, but with Stephanie out on the scrutiny leave, I'll also be covering the items that fall in her portfolio, which is finance. So starting off with my area, I could do every council meeting. Just wanted to start off with a brief reminder about the Borough offering grocery store transportation, online food shopping assistance through the Department of Community Services. For more information, please reach out to the staff at the Community Center at 732-819-0052. Mayor is very excited to hear that new update about the supermarket. You know, I'd like to get this information out while we're without one, but it is. I mean, thank you so much for all of your hard work and dedication for facilitating this process and bringing us to this point. So hopefully, we won't be able to, we won't have to be making these announcements for too much longer. Moving on to some community-centered programming highlights. We kicked off the holiday events, the holiday season, yesterday with the Thanksgiving luncheon, which over 120 members attended and enjoyed the Thanksgiving meal with turkey and all the trimmings. Thanks to Ken, the chairman of Department of Community Services, for another successful event. And coming up on Tuesday, December 12th, we'll have a holiday luncheon from 11:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., food from Paffari and entertainment by Gordon James. And then less than a week later, we'll have a holiday party that's co-sponsored by the Lions Club. That's on Saturday, December 16th, starting at 11:30 a.m. at the Community Center. A few days later, we'll have a Winter Wonderland Dance Performance Tuesday, December 19th, at 11:30 a.m. at the Community Center. And last but not least, we'll have a winter concert Friday, December 29th, starting at 11:00 a.m. at the Community Center. A few updates with recreation programs. Just wanted to announce the save the date for the Highland Park Youth Theater Company production of Matilda Jr., the musical. First showing is Thursday, January 11th at 6:30 p.m., and the second one will be at Sunday, January 14th at 3:00 p.m. And she shows our town's education, the arts and the theater in particular. So I remember, looking at this for my daughter, it may already be too late, but there was an open registration for Susie Gold Jr. That's going to be starting up in February. It filled up and wait-listed within 12 hours of registration opening. And there's already like 50 kids signed up, ready to go, and more waiting for a spot to hopefully open up. But we do have plenty of other programming that's still available. We have registrations currently open for youth basketball. Just to note that for the kindergarten to sixth grade, that registration closes tonight, so last chance to register for that. Also, we also currently have open winter soccer rovers, youth winter track, adult basketball, and adult indoor soccer. And then coming soon, within a week, we'll have registrations open for recreation dance, theater review class, and jumping jelly beans for the little ones. Again, those will be open next week. A little brief Arts Commission update, so around town, you may have noticed a few more of those decals that the Arts Commission put together. So they have been installed. I think we're now up to about 14 scattered around the downtown and sort of most of the schools. So now we're just a little way that the Arts Commission is greasing up our town and getting a little bit more fun. And then last but not least, I have a finance update. The Rent Control Board meeting was last held on Wednesday, October 25th. The board voted to certify the annual rent increase for 2024, and that allowable rent increase is 3.8% and will apply to leases as of January 1st, 2024. And that, Mayor, is my report.
Thank you. Very extensive. Councilmember Hale?
Mayor, I just wanted to say thank you to all my fellow council members and Mayor and Senator Dagen for the little ceremony that we had at the beginning. It was appreciated. It's been on the books since April, so, by the way, I used to be able to do that. I'm very proud of my son, but I also just wanted to give a shout out to the troop master for Highland Park. His name is Sheldon Frydenrath. Sheldon has been the troop master in Highland Park forever. And this is his 25th Eagle Scout coming out of Highland Park. So that's over 40 or 50 years. So that's a pretty amazing mentoring that he does. So I just wanted to give a shout out to Sheldon for all he did for Zach and for so many others. Also wanted to report that the Neighborhood NTP program is just closing out its second year. Over this course of this last year, we've been able to provide about $90,000 to 20 businesses and residents up along Woodbridge Avenue for design work, facade improvements, and a number of other projects. I really want to thank Assistant to the Borough Administrator Emma Von Thum for her leadership in this, in this effort, and for also all the stakeholder committees that have been involved in it. It looks very promising. We're on track for next year to have our grant renewed. So the process of revitalizing up on Woodbridge Avenue is well underway and will continue. So thank you to Emma and to all the stakeholders for this year and also a great year for things to come. Also, just a quick thank you and shout out to everyone who came together to create the empty Shabbat Table exhibit a couple of weeks ago. This exhibit of a Shabbat Table with 242 empty chairs was to call attention to the 242 kidnapped people from around the world who were kidnapped by Hamas terrorists. It was an event that brought over 500 people together to see this and meant quite a lot to many, many people. So thank you to everyone who made it possible. The list is long and significant, but I just wanted to give a thank to that. There is a number of exciting things that are coming up in Highland Park, and I will go over those. Friday, November 24th, is the farmer's market, of course, from 11:00 to 4:30. There is also going to be a walk-up global vaccine clinic at that, and the Christmas trees are for sale at this farmer's market. On Saturday, November twenty-fifth, the Night Owl Market goes from four to eight, arts crafts, artists and gifts and food. Again, another walk-up vaccine clinic, Christmas trees for sale and live music. And there will also be a gingerbread house contest. So you make your best gingerbread house and then it's, it's judged for fabulous prizes. And then the Peace Day Resistance is the downtown tree lighting from seven to eight PM. Again, this is Saturday, November twenty-fifth. There'll be caroling from the Highland Park Community Chorus and the world's best Santa Claus who shows up in the fire department. And I can already see the beard growing as it's being beat. So, you know, obviously it's really the Santa Claus that's coming. But thank you very much to Assistant Councilman George for playing that role. So this is again, Saturday, November twenty-fifth from seven to eight comes the Santa on fire truck, among other things. On the twenty-sixth of November, there is a small business arts and craft market from twelve to four. Again, arts and crafts and artisan market along with food, again vaccines, Christmas trees and live music. So this holiday weekend, it is quite a lot of events going on around our local businesses. And I, I do want to point out that we really do, at this particular time of year, need to shop our local businesses. All of the gifts that you're giving, all of the gifts that you are, are out and about. Please take a look at Highland Park. This is a crucial time for businesses in order to make it. We will be having a Small Business Weekend update and to continue that. And then last but not least, coming up again is on December seventh, there's a menorah lighting and Supercannyo party from four to five thirty again at the Walkwoods Pavilion. So a lot of things going on. Please shop small businesses and everybody have a wonderful and full Thanksgiving. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Canada. I'm going to leave this because I ran out of my office to get here and left my report in the printer. First, I would like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I don't have anything to report on my boards and commissions because unfortunately, due to ongoing health issues, I haven't been able to attend any meetings this long. But on a personal note, I'd like to thank the chief. I had a family member staying with me who had just gotten out of the hospital and there came a time where she was in crisis and even though I'm a social worker, when it's your family member, you're not thinking clearly and I had to call and Officer Nick, and I hope I say his name right, Seika. And Sergeant Schaefer had to respond. And I have to say, I was very impressed with how Officer Seika spoke with her and was able to calm her down immediately and take care of the problem where she did not have to go to the hospital. So I want to thank your officers for that. And I apologize for everybody tonight for being late tonight. Mental health in this time of year are very busy and that's my report. Everybody have a wonderful, happy and healthy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Council President?
We lose stress sometimes. Hi, my name is Matthew Hirsch. I chair the Public Works Committee and just to echo Councilman Hale, because this is Small Business Weekend is very exciting. There are so many opportunities to shop local and buy really good gifts for any holiday that's coming up. You can get a basket from Pino's. You can put together a really cool gift basket at the farmer's market. You can get gift certificates from our local businesses. You can find opportunities at the public library, I'm sure. But you could, but there are so many ways to think. Not only think, you don't have to think creatively to shop local for gifts. It really is an easy effort and it's much easier than traveling out to the highways. You just kind of look for something. You can find a really great gift items here, including. This is from Venus, who's one of the vendors at the, at the farmer's market, sells beautiful scarves. So I thought this was a scarf when I got it, but it's not. It's actually a blanket and it's wonderful, so I'm going to wear it. You know what? I'm always cold. You know what? Tis the season. So here we go. My name is Matthew Hirsch. I'm the council president. I chair the Public Works Committee. This is your friendly reminder that recycling is canceled this week and that borough offices will be closed Thursday and Friday in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. It is Tuesday, so you probably already found out what's happening on Monday. But today was bag leaves collection. Tomorrow, Business District and South Side Garbage Collection and South Side. My neighbors, take your trash out, please, tonight, because it's going to fill up real quickly this weekend and you're not going to have another opportunity until next week. So please remember, remind your neighbors, anything that we can do to make sure that people get their garbage out tonight. Tomorrow, Thursday, I'm sorry, Thursday, there's no recycling, no garbage collection. Friday, no recycling, no garbage collection, so please be prepared and plan ahead. Related bulk pickup, just another reminder, this bulk pickup is by appointment only. We had special collections following the Townline Garage Sale, but normally bulk waste collection is by appointment. Pickups will be scheduled on Wednesdays during the months of April, May, June and September and October. So plan for the spring and to make an appointment, please call Public Works at seven three two two four seven nine three seven nine. Tonight on the, on the agenda, we have a second reading of an ordinance that hopefully will pass, and I think it will, of our updated mitigation fee for tree replacement as the liaison to the Shade Tree Advisory Committee. As you know, the Highland Park Municipal Code requires payment into our tree replacement fund when a property owner does not plant the required number of replacement trees. So with inflation, general recent rapid increase in costs, the amount presently required by our ordinance is four hundred dollars a tree. It is materially too low, as the Shade Tree Advisory Committee has recommended. And that's below the cost of the purchase of new replacement trees. So our Shade Tree Advisory Committee has recommended continuing with a two-tier distinction between owner occupied and investment property already in our ordinance. And we are asking homeowners who are seeking to remove a non-borough tree on the property to now pay six hundred dollars per tree, which is under the six hundred and fifty dollar cost target. And ask, and ask those who own property for investment or business to pay eight hundred and fifty dollars for private property. If they're not street trees, they're not borough or shade trees, street trees. So obviously for businesses, this cost is a business expense. This is, this is in order to keep our tree replacement fund solvent. And the Shade Tree Advisory Committee has been strongly recommending this for quite some time and you're happy to update our ordinance and make sure that we can continue to plant trees. Particularly now, as you might be noticing, we have a lot of trees that are aging out at the same time. We have a lot of trees that are hitting a hundred, one twenty. You know, they don't, their roots are limited to where they can go on the street. So we are planting a lot of trees and are going to get big for a little bit, so we have to keep up with that. The Highland Park River Greenway Community Meeting. So the Highland Park River Greenway is a concept that would, is a river trail that would connect Johnson and Donaldson Parks. This has been, you might remember, we received a feasibility grant study from the state a few years ago for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to explore this concept. And so now we're moving forward in the public exploration process to map out, you know, potential routes, potential access points and to really just get the public up to speed on what could be a really exciting infrastructure project. This community meeting is Wednesday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, six thirty PM, right downstairs at the Highland Park Community Center. Snow volunteers. It is raining now and boy, I don't. But that's actually, you know, as Public Works Chair, snow is, is no snow, is a mantra. However, when it does snow, the borough is seeking individuals interested in performing snow removal in the community as a volunteer or for a fee. Any shoveler's charging a fee will negotiate to work with an owner or renter. The borough is simply gathering a list of names to be provided to residents on requesting immediate assistance out of the snow. If you're interested, please contact Janet Molina at the community center at seven three two eight one nine zero zero five two or email jmolina, M O L I N A at H B E O R O dot com. Sustainable Highland Park. So I wish I had a plaque here inside the hallway. Yeah, I know, we did. For the tenth year in a row, the Borough of Highland Park has achieved Silver Level Certification from Sustainable Jersey. This accomplishment was earned this year by earning a total of four hundred and twenty points by exceeding benchmarks in thirty-four action items ranging from Sustainable Highland Park hosting its Earth Day Fair to tracking and analyzing energy usage in borough buildings to purchasing electric vehicles. Sustainable Highland Park also grants points for the, the public information that we put out there, the level of community outreach, intentional and community outreach that the borough does, getting out into apartment buildings, spreading the news of the borough, letting people know what's going on. So these are all part of what makes for Sustainable Community, not just environmental, even though environmental is a huge part of it. The Mayor and I were, and Councilman Postonik, we're, and Councilman Hale. We're at the League this year, at the League of Municipalities this year to accept this reward, award. And, you know, thank you to Sustainable Highland Park, thank you to Emma Von Thum, Terry Hovair and the whole team. It really does take village to amass these level points. We are one of the highest in the state. We are perennially behind Woodbridge, which is very frustrating, but Woodbridge is like Jupiter compared to us. So it is, it is, you know, it is, it's not, it's not as hard for them to, to, to get ahead, but good for them. We can do it on our own. So congratulations to my colleagues, to Terry, Emma and community, Sustainable Highland Park, Tina Wisehouse, Irene Marks, Rosie Lorenzo, and the whole team of Sustainable Highland Park for making this reality happen. The plaque is hanging out in the hallway. It really is a tribute to the hard work of our volunteers and our staff and our policymakers, so thank you. Just wanted to give a shout out to the Veterans Day Parade, thank you to the Red and Valley Veterans Alliance, the City of Brunswick, and of course Mayor Elsie Foster and the Borough of Highland Park and the Highland Park Department of Community Services for hosting a wonderful Veterans approved. Beautiful weather out. Retired Major Harold Woody served as the Grand Marshal and talked of his twenty-five years leading Army Junior ROTC Program at New Brunswick High School. Great day. Great to walk from Highland Park to New Brunswick always. Thank you to Interfaith Rise for holding its ninth annual community walk with the Silent Seekers on Sunday, November twelfth. Thank you to Mayor Elsie Foster for speaking at that event and kind of kicking the event off. We wish Interfaith Rise much success. And if you're unfamiliar, Interfaith Rise provides essential assistance to refugees and silas who have experienced crises before arriving in our community. Immensely, immensely important activity for our community. Councilman George mentioned the loss of Mary Denver. I first got to know Mary, Mary when I joined the council. It was liaison to the Human Relations Commission and she and her husband Don both served simultaneously on the board. It was such a joy to learn from them, work with them and to really get to know Don, Mary and their entire family. So we celebrate her life. She was in, just in an unbelievable stewarding of the environment. Put all of her effort, of her volunteer effort and work into the native plant reserves and the Environmental Education Center and really committed a considerable amount of time to the borough, obviously to her family. Our thoughts go out to Don and her children, Michael, Sarah, Belinda. Of course, she's predeceded by, by her son Don. Our hearts are with the family. She has left such an impact on Highland Park that she'll be with us for a long time. I see some nurses here in the audience. Hello. Really nice to see you and you know that this time, you know that we that you have our, our, is unbelievable what you're dealing with out there and you have our full support. Another way that we can show our support is by, is by passing resolutions for legislation that will require state staffing. Item thirteen oh on the, on the consent agenda supports calls on Governor Murphy to pass and sign into law S three oh four A forty-five thirty-six to mandate state staffing levels in every hospital. One of the cosponsors was Senator Dagen, who's here with us. And, you know, we look forward to working with you on however we can switch. So thank you. That's my report, Mayor.
Borough Administrator reports?
It's just one item, Mayor. Thank you. I just wanted to put out a reminder. I mentioned it for last meeting. We probably will mention it again. We're pushing hard to complete the meter replacement, the water meter replacement project in town. So if you have your own home and you have a water meter that hasn't been exchanged, you would have already gotten the letter or will get a letter in the next week or so from the borough to please schedule an appointment with National Metering Services. One eight 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 four four eight zero 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 nine. We're pushing really hard to get as many appointments made by December fifteenth so we know we can close out the project kind of within the window of either by the end of the year or soon after the new year. So please just continue making those calls, scheduling those appointments. Thanks. That's all I have and happy Thanksgiving.
No report, Madam Mayor.
I want to concur with Terry about the water replacement. I, I got my letter about a week ago and I kept calling and kept calling, but the line was busy. So if you get your letter and you don't get through the first few times, continue to call. Somebody will answer. I do have an appointment. So please follow up with that. And we all love and worked with Mary Denver over the years as she gave tirelessly of herself. And with that, I'm just going to ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. I see the nurses here as well and I truly wish you were not here. I wish you were at work doing the job that you trained for many years to do and where your heart is because without nurses, you know, you are the cornerstone of our healthcare system. So I really wish that you were not here, but I am happy to see that this is an assembly and a standing bill to move forward to giving you the support that you all do need. And I hope this will get resolved really, really soon. You, you guys are eager to get back to work and we want to see you back at work. Thank you for what you do. I just want to follow up with, we went to the League last week and Matt spoke about that we receive our silver, silver award again. And we have been receiving silver and yes, Woodbridge does take up a huge chunk of everything because they're much bigger than us. But we have been receiving steady silver awards, which is really hard to attain, but we're really good at it. And just how good we are at it, because we were one of the first, we're one of the first green communities and we do all this wonderful stuff. I was the moderator for Sustainable New Jersey because although Woodbridge is bigger than us, Highland Park is mighty. We're small, but we're mighty. So they asked me to moderate the panel on Sustainable New Jersey. So again, Highland Park is making its mark in all places. And now I want to bring it closer to home. And I have, as the holiday approaches, I have been shopping locally as well. So I shop from sweets to nuts because the holidays are here. You want to have that, that kind of stuff. You want to have sweets and nuts and, you know, for desserts and stuff. So I would strongly suggest that you go to these places in town. I got my flowers from Robert Flores, so that's on my checklist. That's done. And then eating locally, going, supporting our local business. Last week, we were at Mr. Price. That was great. Continue to support our local downtown business. And then last night, I was at Paffari's. All of these places are great to shop, great to eat. And as you heard me speak earlier about how small downtown is struggling, the struggle is real and we have to be creative in finding ways to keep our downtown going. Because when you see these big box stores around you, they don't support local towns. For example, Quick Check is leaving and why are they leaving? They're leaving because they want to have a gas station and they want to have those mega gas stations that you go to and have everything. We're a small town and we have no place for that. But if we shop locally, we can keep our downtown business vibrant. Thank you. Okay, and now it's time for our public, public session. This is, it's time for our first of two public discussion sessions. Total time allotted is twenty-one minutes, three minutes per maximum per speaker. Comments are limited to items on the agenda. If you want to speak on an item that is not listed, please do so at the second public comment session later in the meeting. The Borough Clerk will monitor the, monitor the time and indicate when three minutes has elapsed. She will give a warning when there is thirty seconds remaining. I may warn or terminate a participant's statement if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided or if the statement is abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Comments of members of the public attended meeting in person will be heard first, followed by those who are participating via Zoom. If you are interested in speaking, please step up to the microphone or raise your hand on Zoom by pressing star nine on your phone keypad or selecting the raise hand button. And now we're gonna have our in-person, and please tell us your name and address.
I'm Abby Snell. Right now, I live on Harper Street. So a couple of things, just in response to some of what I heard tonight. Last time you talked about buying new police cars, we had a little bit of a discussion. And the Kushner grant sounds amazing. I did hear that there's some money for new police cars. I, I just would ask again, you know, just as I did last time, whether these cars are needed. And if they are, to ensure that they're electric vehicles, I know there were supply chain issues. We just got this sustainable, you know, award. But if they, if they are needed due to cars being, you know, really in bad condition, just to make sure that if possible, you know, that's great money, and that money can go toward electric vehicles in particular, which I know you guys are already working on. So I just wanted to say that. I also just wanted to comment on the library and hearing that it could potentially open in February, although I understand that's flexible, is incredible. It's been really a loss to the community, while I understand the renovations are critical and will be really great. You know, it's a place that is, is an equalizer. Everyone can go there. It's great for kids. There's really nowhere in town that kids can, that families can bring kids that's like the library, or even that's not like the library. There's not many places that you can just drop in and not spend money, but see community and see people. So I'm really excited for that opening. And I would ask, I always, you know, want to advocate for the spaces for little kids. And if there's any potential to see, you know, plans or get any community input before it opens, that would be great. I don't know where it is in the process, but you know, that's, that's really important to get that kid's space to be good for all and accessible and also, you know, suitable for multiple ages. So I'm very excited about that. And then the other thing I wanted to mention that I heard about, I heard the rumor about the Quick Check closing, you know, first online things circulate. I'm sad to hear that, but there's a lot going on with the schools. There's the need for space for a new pre-K. And from what I understand, just through attending meetings, it seems like they're back to square one. And Quick Check is immediately across from Irving. I don't know if that's feasible, but I would really encourage both sides to come together and see. And I encouraged this last night when I attended the Board of Ed meeting, but I'd encourage you as well. This affects our entire community. I know it's, you know, a school issue, but really it's the whole town issue. And if there's any way, I don't know if that law is a possibility. I know it's for lease, maybe not for sale. Maybe, maybe there's a potential. I know we'll all miss our coffee. I go there many more hours, more than I should. But I do, you know, if there's a way to find a good space for the pre-K, at least take a look at that and just help, help the schools be creative, please, because I think it's really critical. Thank you.
I just want to address the Kushner grant. Thank you for your comments. The Kushner grants, they, they were specific. And these were dedicated to these organizations that received. They had to go out and form five oh one C threes to receive these grants. He was very specific about how he wants them to be administered. So we, the EV cars, absolutely. We've been on the list for five years now for EV vehicles. And we have reached out to other towns to do shared services to see if we could get them, because they're buying larger amounts, and to see if we can get one or two. It's that challenging. Yes, there is a supply chain, and it's very, and everybody wants EV vehicles. So until they get to where it's, a lot of production is going on, we're still holding on, hoping, and trying to share services with other towns to buy, to be in their group when they're buying EV vehicles. As a matter of fact, last year, we were looking to try to get a EV garbage truck. But we're still not, we're still not there yet.
Did you just want to talk about?
Councilmember Hale?
We recently had a meeting with the borough and the, the, the school and the school administrators and, and to talk about the, the need for, for pre-K. And so those conversations are going on. We're working together, I think. Which is a great thing, because this is an absolutely, an entire borough issue. And I know the mayor is, is very involved in this as well, but we have sat down with him. We scheduled continued meetings to make sure that we're all on the same page about how to make the best choices for how to make sure that our three- and four-year-olds are, have a good passion to come to school. So those conversations are continuing, so.
Yes, that is correct. You mentioned the Quick Check space. It's too small. Their requirement, it doesn't fit their needs, but we are, our conversation is monthly, and it's an ongoing conversation to try to accommodate and work together. We're really working, I believe, really well. And I've scheduled monthly meetings. We're, we sit, we talk, and we brainstorm and see what we can do for our town. You spoke about the library. My publisher's right there. So I think you should go, you should talk to him about what their plans are, and he can provide you with more answers. Thank you.
Hi, Dan Stern Cardnell, Harper Street. Commenting, I know each of these items has their own public here, but I'm going to leave in a couple minutes. So I just wanted to highlight the two Sony items on the agenda. It seems like each one of them would, in their own way, promote deconstruction of more housing in Highland Park, which is a great thing to help address the affordability crisis in Highland Park and Northsex County and in New Jersey more broadly. So I hope everybody votes in favor of those things. I should vote on speaking on my own behalf and not on behalf of Tony Ford's, Chris, and Amy's blog. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor President?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, Terry. Quickly, I just want to follow up also with, with Abby's comment, too. I mean, that's something we really have to think about and take seriously, because the governor, you know, announced that new, new vehicle manufacturers will have to make zero emission vehicles, increasing percentage of their, yeah, twenty thirty-five, a hundred percent of, 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 of vehicle sales in New Jersey. So I hope their supply chain issues are addressed quickly, and that's why we are always looking out for grants to create more public charging stations in town to, to, to build on the two that we have behind here, because that's, that's an economic development driver as well, but it's also a necessity. We're going to have to do it. I think Quick Check is absolutely wrong, that they are going in the direction of the gas stations, just like Wal-Mart. It's this driving, it's this highway model that we seem to be, always seem to be slipping back toward. And it hurts downtowns like ours, because we lose stores because of it. The decision making that happens very far away. So it's, 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 it's frustrating, but I think the, I think there's a lot of opportunity for towns like Highland Park to really benefit from this. But if we had a senator here, we would ask them to, to figure out how towns are going to comply, because we need to, and we're, and we want to be out in front and make sure that we do have an all-electric fleet. And certainly before twenty thirty-five.
Way before then.
Terry? Our administrator, Heather?
I know. I, I just, I, I just, with regard to the two ordinances, I didn't know if we should mention, just because there may be people who wanted to speak on that or.
Yeah, he's just saying because he's leaving, but I think that when we get to that part of it.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Sarah Keely. I live on River View Avenue. And I just wanted to say a few things. One of the nurses is still on strike. First of all, I want to express my appreciation, our appreciation to Highland Park for giving the problem of unsafe staffing the attention it deserves. We've been on strike for a hundred and, I'm not quite sure, ten, ten days now. And we haven't made much progress with negotiations, should be told, if, if any. It seems like the hospital has resolved to deny the nurse-to-patient ratios the staff and our patients desperately need. In fact, they flatly told us that they would never agree to California-like staffing ratios. So, however, we remain hopeful and optimistic about the community coalition that we're building. The purpose of that is to try to support these bills and past resolutions in other municipalities. And the problem of seventeen hundred nurses still on strike remains. It's hard to hear friends and neighbors describe the poor experiences they're having at the hospital given the current circumstances. It's no surprise, but it does trigger feelings of guilt. However, we need to remember that our fight is for the future of patient care at RWJ in all facilities across the state. For the sake of the patients as well as our nurses, we'll continue to do our part to reach a resolution that prioritizes adequate staffing. And again, thank you to the community of Highland Park as a whole and beyond for all the support and the encouragement that you showed us.
Thank you.
Ms. Jessica, I live on Montgomery Street, and I just wanted to follow up with what Sarah just mentioned and really thank the council, mayor and council for passing this resolution. And it has been wonderful to see the support of Highland Park residents who have organized time and time again to support the nurses. And I think this is absolutely in line with the constituency of, of, of our residents. And so I just really appreciate that you should have put that forward and are going to vote on that. And I also just wanted to say, as you, as you mentioned, Councilmember Hirsch, that Senator Dagen is a co-sponsor, but Assemblymember Caravan Check and Assemblymember Stanley are not co-sponsors. So it'd be really wonderful to use your connections and, and put some pressure on them to do that. It's a really important bill. Obviously, I'm not a nurse. I am a community ally, but I think we all can agree that when we, if we go to the hospital, we want to make sure that we get the care that we need, and that's only possible if nurses have safe staffing. So really have been frustrated to see the nurses be on strike for a hundred and ten days, but also extremely grateful that they're fighting a fight that is not just their fight, but also all residents, all residents of New Jersey and beyond. So thank you again.
Yes, we have eleven attendees online, three hands up. First is phone number ending four 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 five. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Lois Leving, North Second Avenue. Okay, in the reports, I heard mention of the facade improvements along Woodbridge Avenue, something like ninety K grant money. Well, also in your September newsletter, twenty twenty-three, you have inside an orange box with a before and an after photo with a new facade. And I see the remaining one step up on each of those two doors. Could someone tell me, or where is the sign for a wheelchair to enter?
Councilmember Hale?
I, I certainly will look into that. I'm not familiar with that particular picture. I'm not, so I'm not exactly sure which area that you're talking about, but certainly we want to make sure that everything is disabled access, so we'll certainly take a look at that.
It's the white building that's, well, it's on the clerk's desk, the, the counter with all those. It's the only building inside the twenty-three. I don't know how many other newsletters you've had out. It's not off the internet. It's off a piece of paper. But just as a reminder, please, as you go forward, Community Development Block Grant Programs, Housing Act of nineteen sixty-four, U.S. Code forty-two, Section five three oh one, it's secret. Like the general Title VI provision specifically bars discrimination in state or local government use of federal block grant funds. So please remember that it has to be accessible. Maybe this is Woodbridge Avenue. I think it looks to the left of La Rosa, but I don't have enough photo, and I don't have an address. So it, things have to be accessible. This is already thirty years past the Americans with Disabilities Act. So somebody is slipping, the construction official, the whoever gives these, somebody has to know. Thank you.
I would just, certainly will, will, we will take a look at that. I would hesitate to make a decision based on a picture without being out there and actually looking at it. So absolutely, we, we are committed to disabled access, and we'll simply take a look at, at. I know what you're talking about now. It is next to La Rosa. It's an account's office, and we'll certainly go over and take a look at it. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Okay, thank you. But now who was just speaking? Because I can't see you.
That's Councilmember Hale.
Oh Hale, okay. I didn't know which one it was.
And that's his portfolio, so he has the MVP grant. So I believe he'll have a conversation with the property owner or the property renter.
Well, either one, there should be at least a sign saying go around the back, if that's possible. I don't know if there's a hill back there, or have a portable ramp. Not even, they're not supposed to have to call and say, hey, I'm coming over. It's supposed to be automatic. It's already thirty years. But okay, we'll just keep going, and this will be my, my subject for you guys. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lois, and have a great Thanksgiving, and we will continue to look into that.
Thank you. I'll be back.
Hi, next up, Mayor is Mary Forsberg. Please just state your name and address to the record, please. Hello?
Yes, please speak into the microphone.
Mary Forsberg, three seventeen Denison Street. I'm interested in your Resolution thirteen C that is you're hiring professional engineering services for roadway improvements on North Fourth, Denison Street, and Harper Street. I would like to think that, I'm, I'm not quite sure why you need professional design services for that, unless you're planning to dismantle the tables in front of Pinots, which I think should have been taken down a long time, and those cement, those cement barriers and the wooden structures. No one sits there, and it's a dangerous thing for people who are walking and driving, because a lot of big trucks double park right there, and people double park in front of Souchana and, and in front of Morty's. So I'd like you to redesign that and get rid of that stuff. But I'm pretty sure you think that that is a successful thing, which it is not, because no one ever sits there. But I'm curious about what, why you are needing design services for Denison Street. Denison Street in my block, the block between Third and Fourth, is like a dirt road. About fifteen years ago, the town had a water main break there and reported and never re-surfaced the road. Right, right near North Fourth, it is really, the potholes there are incredible. And it has, nothing has been done for at least fifteen years, if not more. And I'm wondering why, why it's necessary to do, to do, to redesign the road? What is the whole point of, of that? Because it seems to me that all you really need to do is repave it. There is, all of the, all of the intersection paths are wheelchair, you know, kind of, people can use wheelchairs there. So what is, what is the point of spending eight hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars for that?
Hi, Mayor. Our administrator?
Hi, Mary. The, the reso is to authorize the engineering services. There's design work. It doesn't cost, I don't have the number in front of me. There's a road project that's in the order of eight hundred thousand dollars for the construction. We have to do related engineering for all those roadways. They put together the bid specs that go out to the contractors. We agree with you. Denison needs resurfacing, and that's what will be happening. But our engineers do a complete detail on that work before it goes out. They also. They also check for ADA accessibility at the corners, updating it to whatever the current standards are. So there's, there's more than goes to, go to it than just the milling and paving, which is the kind of the final step in the resurfacing process. So this is the engineering work that is needed in order to execute the project next year.
Do you, do you do that for every single road that you repave?
Pretty much, especially when it's a state aid road.
And what is, what is happening on North Fourth?
Milling and paving, but all the other engineering work to bring it up to speed.
And so are you getting rid of the concrete barriers and things?
They will have to be moved and either replaced in, in back or moved somewhere else, depending on what the governing body decides.
And eliminating them?
Not necessarily. We can move them and put them back if we want.
Well, I, I suggest that you eliminate them and just let people sit on the sidewalk. Because that's what, that's the only place people sit. They do that on the street.
Thank you so much, Mary.
Mayor, can I also add that a lot of our accessible corners are not up to compliance with ADA, and that's why we need, another reason why we need the studies done to find out which ones are and which ones aren't.
And I would also like to add that when the road is, as you say, Mary, torn up and it's set for, and it's sitting for a while, that there's a lot of infrastructure underground that needs to be dealt with. Earlier this year, I met with PSCNG at one of their conference meetings. And that was one of my questions too, why does it take so long to have the roads repaired? Why, you know, it seemed like it's ongoing. And one of the things that they shared with me, which I was quite surprised that when utility, the underground utilities that's there, that it takes a much longer time for them to clear out and to get the work done. Because over the years, there was no rules that you had to take whatever you, if you went down with hose and pipe, people just left their stuff there and it created clutter and it take a lot more time to get everything to clean up for them to actually do the work. But once the, with technology and we're doing fiber optics and everything else that's being done, it takes a much longer time to put, to install what is needed to be installed to keep our infrastructure going. Because they're dealing with pipes, sewer lines, cable lines and a host of other things. And it would be a waste of money to close the road up completely and then reopen it up for someone else to do projects. So we know that there's ongoing project in one particular area. We want to get all that work done. And then once the work is completed and they seal it temporarily, the earth has to, it's got settled. And once it gets settled, then they do the final pavement with the curb cuts and what have you. So it does take time.
Um, Mayor, I see another hand up, but we, I did note that we were supposed to end at 8:11 and I see Mary put her hand back up, so I don't know.
We can be back, Mary will bring Mary back in in a second, public session.
Okay, would you like me to call on the next, the one who hasn't spoken?
Yeah, person has, was not speaking.
Sam Friedman, if you could please let us confirm your name and address, please.
Sure, Sam Friedman, 250 Lawrence. First, I want to thank you for supporting the safe staffing bill. It's really very important, both for our health and for the health and happiness of the nurses. I'm not a nurse, but I've visited their picket lines about 20 times and talked with a lot of them. And in our conversations with them, or my conversations with them, I've heard many, many stories about how the lack of safe staffing both puts the patients at risk, but also forces them to decide who to help and who to let suffer. And that's a horrible moral position to put anyone in. It creates huge stress and exhaustion. I also, I want to urge everyone in the audience and on the council to take a walk over. It's good exercise. Talk with the nurses. They're wonderful people and you will find out lots of things that will be useful. The other thing connected to that, for those of you who have any influence, like members of the council, but probably other people in the audience, put pressure on the hospital. You know, they're making shocking amounts of money for their top executives and things. And that money could be going to services and to nurses and to things to help keep us all healthy and alive. Thank you.
All right, now we're going to ordinance and requires second reading. Ordinance number 23 dash 2077, bond ordinance required. Ordinance providing for replacement of roof or related improvement to the public library and by the Borough of Highland Park in Middlesex County, State of New Jersey, appropriating $400,000, therefore to authorize insurance of $380,000 bond notes of the Borough of Highland Park's finance part of the cost.
An ordinance entitled bond ordinance providing for replacement of the roof and all the related improvements to the public library by and in the Borough of Highland Park in the county of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, appropriating $400,000 thereof and authorizing the issuance of 380 bonds or notes of the Borough to finance the cost thereof has been duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title. An affidavit of publication are on file. The ordinance has also been posted and made available for public inspection.
Public hearing, it's time for a public hearing on this ordinance. If you would like to speak on this ordinance, please come up to the microphone or use your raise hand button on Zoom.
I do have a hand up. I'm guessing it's Lois Leving, 4445.
And it's going to be on this ordinance?
This is regarding the ordinance, Ms. Leving?
Okay, hi, I'm unmuted. I, I have, I think, one question. How long is the warranty on the roof?
Yes, please. Councilmember George?
Thank you. Ordinarily, the warranty on, on roofwork of this type is graded. It's generally a full, full warranty for either three or six years and a general warranty for certain types of repairs for 10 years. But statutory requirement is that roofs are guaranteed for 10 years. And hopefully this time we monitor it carefully and make sure that if there are any problems, we, we get on them right away. A long time ago in the past when the roof was replaced, probably a good 30 years ago, the warranty problems weren't monitored until it was unfortunately too late. So now we've learned our lesson and, and we will be monitoring it carefully. Also note for everyone when we introduce this, that this is for the full replacement along with the related engineering to try and make the, the problem is always the junctions where, where the duct work for the HVAC runs. And that's being corrected. And it also will make the overall renovation of the library hopefully dry and tight.
Thank you.
No more hands? Okay, motion to adopt or reject ordinance number 23 dash 277?
So moved.
Second. Roll call. Councilwoman Canavera? Yes. Councilman George?
It's about time, yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Pistonik?
Can't wait to visit him February.
Please report an ordinance number 23 dash 2078.
An ordinance concerning monetary mitigation for the payment of perfever payments was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits of publication are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Public hearing, it's now time for public hearings. Please speak into the microphone. If you'd like to speak or use your raise hand on Zoom.
I have a hand raised. Ms. Leving, 4445, if you could, if you're speaking on the next ordinance.
Hi, Lois Leving, North Second Avenue. Okay, I didn't hear mention, not that I could hear many sentences tonight, but that in the ordinance, it exempts owner occupied homeland from fines when the tree is dead, dying, unsafe. It's a whole sentence that exempts, dangerous is, I think, is in there. So please remind homeowners that the fine excludes them, or does it? Does this, is that still part of the tree ordinance? That a dangerous dying, dropping branches type tree is exempt from a fine or a replacement fee?
Yeah.
Is that true? Did you change that?
Councilman, Council President?
That is correct, Mary. Lois, I'm sorry.
All right, so where are we? Who was that? Hirsch?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Lois. Yeah, it's Matt Hirsch, and you are correct.
Okay, so it remains the same. Thank you.
Thank you for asking, though.
I do have another hand up, just doing hand management here. Next up is Mary Forsberg. Again, we're talking about the, the tree-related monetary mitigation ordinance. Please state your name and address.
Sorry, not, not, I don't have anything to say about this. I just hit the wrong button.
Okay, no worries.
Motion to adopt or reject ordinance?
Motion. Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera? Yes. Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
And Councilman Pistonik?
Yes.
May I have a motion to continue public hearing on the adoption slash rejection of ordinance 23 dash 2079 and ordinance number 23 dash 2080 to the December 25th, to December 5th, 2023 council meeting?
So moved, second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera? Yes. Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Pistonik?
Yes.
Consent agenda items. May I have a motion to adopt or reject the following consent agenda items, 13A through 13P?
So moved.
All right, um, we need the second on this one. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera? Yes. Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Pistonik?
Yes.
Resolution requiring a separate reading. 14A, 11 dash 23 dash 256, resolution to approve budget transfer. May I have a motion to adopt or reject?
So moved, second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera? Yes. Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Council, Councilman Pistonik?
Yes.
Um, resolution 14B, 23, 11 dash 23 dash 257, resolution authorized an agreement with Lex, Lex Link Wireless LLC bracket LTW to purchase and install CCTV and audio system for the police department as a part of the 911 transfer emergency communication services to Rutgers Dispatch Center.
So moved, second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera? Yes. Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Council President Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilman Pistonik?
Yes.
Now I move to appointments. Mayor's appointment. Mayor's team advisory committee appoints adult member Harry Placer.
I kid at her.
He is my favorite team. Our favorite team. May I have a motion? May I have a motion?
So moved, second.
Okay, he got it. Everybody said it.
Councilwoman Canavera? Yes. Councilman George?
I think maybe we all need some ice cream right now. Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes, there might be something outside.
Council President Hirsch?
Yeah, and it is like, it's like the movie Big. I hope you have every happy show like, you know.
Councilman Pistonik?
Yes.
Okay, now it's time for the second public participation. Three minutes per speaker on any topic. Subject to 9:00 PM inclusion prior to work session. Comments for the members of the public attending in person will be heard first, followed by those on Zoom. Those attending on Zoom. The clerk will monitor your timing, indicate when three minutes has elapsed. She will give a warning when 30 seconds remain. I may interrupt, warn or terminate a participant's statement or if it does not adhere to the three minutes provided or if the statement is abusive, obscene or irrelevant. Comments, comments from the member of public attending in person will be heard first, followed by those who are attending on Zoom. For those who are attending on Zoom to speak, please press star nine on your telephone keypad and then, or raise hand in the application, star six to unmute yourself. Those in the audience can come up first if you wish to speak and tell us your first name, first and last name and your address.
Yes, we have 10 attendees and two hands raised. Looks like phone number 4445, Lois Leving, I'm guessing. If you could confirm and.
Hi, Lois again, North Second. Okay, all right, one more point on accessibility, please. In April, this April, there was a planning board meeting in your chamber where you are pertaining to development on Buck Woods. The site plan shows to me a small opening for the garage vehicles to enter the garage underground parking. I asked a question, how high is that opening? How high, how, what is the height? The answer from the audience by an expert was, the answer was 11 feet high. I just want to make that clear so that if by some, and since the minutes are not yet complete because of staffing problems, I want to make sure, I know you don't approve these, but it is 11 feet high, which it does not look on the sketching. Looks much lower, so I'm thrilled. I was happy to hear it's 11 feet high, not 11 feet wide and seven feet high. East Brunswick, New Brunswick, right here, where the nurses have to go in the employee parking opposite of the traffic light past the train station, opposite Joyce Kilmer is seven feet zero, and that's wrong. It has to be eight feet two. It hasn't been changed. That's the law. East Brunswick has many, many violations on new buildings as this parking deck down past the train station for the Robert Wood employees. So please remember, it has to be at least a minimum of eight feet two. And that's what I was told. It would be 11 feet. And the minutes are not done yet and we'll see what happens. That's my point. Have a great Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Lois. Same to you. Anyone else?
Yes, I do see another hand. It looks like Mary Forsberg. You should be able to put your name and address, please.
Hi, Mary Forsberg, 317 Denison Street. When, I'm curious, when are these improvements supposed to be done on North Fourth and Denison Street and I guess Harper?
We have to do, this is authorizing the engineering work. And then, once that's complete, it goes to the state DOT for review because we use state aid in part to fund these projects and they have to approve the specifications. And once that happens, so we're looking at, we are pushing hard. We would like to see these happen summer, fall next year.
Oh, okay.
Now, there's not, you know, the, the door is closing on improvements this season. We've got some road projects underway in other parts of town. That will be the last of it for the year.
Did all of those road projects require the same amount of engineering and, you know, whatever? projects require the same amount of engineering and, you know, whatever? Do you have to hire an engineering company to go in and check everything?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I have a couple of other, other points. The question request is very impressive, it's very nice that somebody is that generous to Highland Park. I'm curious what the impact will be on borough spending? Because obviously, some of that money would be fungible with some of the expenses like for the library and thing. And I mean, another three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the library is very nice. So I'm, I'm curious, you know, if you're not gonna, if you are getting money to buy new vehicles, what does that mean for the budgets of, of those, those departments? And I, I just have one other comment. And that is, you know, I worked in Trenton for, for twenty-five years. And when, when bills were introduced in Trenton, it was required that a statement for what the bill does and a fiscal analysis be done for every single bill that costs money. I know that, I know that local governments are not required to do that, but it would be very, very useful for people who are, who are who are interested in the way the borough spends money and what the impact of bills are, to know that, that everybody that's voting on these bills thoroughly understands what's in them. I mean, it's not, it wasn't always the case in Trenton that people, you know, were understood what they were voting on and they voted on things without knowing. But I, I think it's a really good idea and it's a really important thing for, for governments to do.
Thank you, Mary. Just a little update that each council member have a portfolio and there's three council members assigned to the various portfolios that we have. If something that they need approval, once it comes through their committee, then the entire council meet, and that is our work session. And we meet in our work sessions to agree, disagree, approve, or not approve before it gets onto the agenda for first or second reading. So we do have an opportunity when we work and we discuss and we agree or disagree. If something should warrant it up to the agenda and then a resolution should be passed. So it, it is a process. And unfortunately, that's why the wheels of government turn so slowly, because there's a lot that must be considered and must be looked into. And we must be good stories, so. It does take some time before you actually see something like, people will say, why can't you just put it on the agenda? It doesn't work like that, it has to go through a committee, it takes a committee forum, as you are aware, that has to be done.
There is, there is very little disagreement when you vote on things, though, which is kind of interesting.
Well, maybe you should attend one of our work sessions.
Yep, okay.
Thank you, Mary, and have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Terry?
I don't have any other hands up. And Mary popped her hand back up, I think. Mary, did you intend to pop your hand back up? Mary?
I think, Mary. We said our goodbyes, good nights to Mary. Okay. Now, does anyone want a five-minute recess?
No.
Okay. Work session item, there will be no formal action taken, and this goes to what Mary was just discussing. This is where we go to work session. And our work session item is signage and facade ordinances. And so that concludes our, our public from us being up here. And we're gonna move into our work session now. So you're more than welcome to stay with us. If you decide not to stay with us, we're gonna take a motion to adjourn. And motion to. Oh, we're, we're not going to exact, we're gonna move from the thesis down here and you guys are more than welcome to stay with us, and this is where the real work begins. Because people talk about work that they're working on, and we agree, and we agree or not disagree. But those who are leaving us, have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Can we get a photo with you guys for the resolution?
Thank you. I'll take it.
Thank you for you guys.
Building.
And that's what I, I.
Where are you trying to go?
Let's go down. These kinds of folks get their pictures in.
Yeah.
And they stay down here so that everybody can.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Yeah, yeah, it's great.
So everybody just.
Some nurses should come over here.
Yeah.
I'll make sure everybody gets in. Okay, let's see. Can you squish it just a little bit more? I know you're trying to keep it signed, too. All right, I can get everybody from here, won't be too close, though. One, two, three, let me make sure that my.
Oh, there you go.
I probably should take it with somebody else's, because I feel like my camera is so old. One, two, three. All right. Seventy-seven minutes left, grabbing in our chat.
There's one here, there's one over here. I think we're good. Okay, and Ed can sit there.
She always says. This microphone does a great job. Security to the ones on the days.
She's so concerned about us, not me. Alright, I'm gonna be a good girl. She is very good.
I second that motion.
Alrighty, signage.
Everybody knows Chris. One of our planning team, works with Jim Constantine, but is our day-to-day person and on the planning board.
So I'll try to keep this brief, and it's been a long night. So, as Terry said, Chris Kessenda. Planning consultant team, L K, providing some advice. So signage ordinance, this is really through the impetus, the impetus of this project is through the native preservation program. As we talked a couple of times tonight. It's over a year to that program. And during the facade grant program that has been running with all the other stakeholders, it was found that during that process that the borough received a lot of phone calls about signage, how it functioned, how it works. And frankly, sending the ordinance just confused people further. So at one of our various, actually multiple stakeholder meetings, we talked about the signage ordinance. Rewrite it, not stuck with that law, it's local ordinance. So, and if I, it was my understanding also that Main Street Highland Park has had issues with really trying to navigate the ordinance when it comes to applying for funding and whatnot. And it's actually through the preservation program approved by the state that we have some money, so switching one project to another, which is common in these year-to-year projects, five-year projects, where we have the state approved a small deviation from the plan to, yeah, we'll set aside money to do the signage for Whittaker. Beauty of this program is that as part of this project, we're actually modifying the sign ordinance for an entire town, so it benefits the entire community, and so might as well do all of it elsewhere instead of peacefully. So that's the impetus of the project, so I understand that there's really no cost to the borough, which is great. Ordinance changes are, can be costly, and for a sign ordinance, it can be very costly. It can range up to six figures for more complex projects. So this particular project is really a three-phase approach. The first phase is really analyzing existing ordinance, second phase is writing the new ordinance, third phase is public participation and approval process, introduction, planning or consistency with the master plan, and of course, adoption, just like any other land development. So we're gearing up, well, actually, we are almost finishing up the first two phases. I'm actually in the middle of writing the new ordinance. During phase one, when I did the research, found that the ordinance is all sorts of convoluted. And I met with the zoning official, your construction professional, and several members of your Main Street Highland Park. We all, all had very, very, very productive meetings, just one, I, I would say we should meet more time with my draft ordinance, which I hope to send eighty percent version to the borough probably tomorrow, or if not on Monday, after Thanksgiving. And we'll meet one more time, discuss the mechanics of the new ordinance. What I found in my research is your sign ordinance is in three different spots of the ordinance. And the whole goal of this is to consolidate, remove a lot of redundancy, and streamline it, so it is much more user-friendly. I think we're gonna find, eliminate about two-thirds of text, so there's a lot of redundancies in the ordinance, and put it in one spot. And also include some best management practices based on model ordinances that you see throughout the country after Reed versus Gilbert, which is a First Amendment case regarding sign ordinance, specifically sign content or content regulation specifically, as well as other model ordinances from American Planning Association and signage industry standards, so sort of modernizing your ordinance. That's sort of a tertiary benefit to it, but the primary benefit or purpose of this project is to consolidate, simplify toward the end user and for the front user, and to really update certain standards, mainly the dimensional standards, because from what I understand from your construction professional, zoning official, and Main Street Highland Park, it is quite restrictive. So we're looking to add flexibility, both in terms of the dimensional standards as well as the, the process to review. Including flexibility for deviations. That, that's basically, we're in the middle of the process, and it should be done soon, I understand. We're shooting for introduction in probably January.
Sometimes, that's why we wanted to at least touch base with you, in part because this is through the NPP program. We wanted to get the bulk of the work done in this grant year and use the majority of Chris's time this year through the grant, and then next year we'll figure out how we cover it through the grant. You know, as we see through, you know, see it through the public, you know, comment and, and hearing process. But I just can, I have tried to make sense of our ordinance from time to time. It's difficult, and then, you know, Chris is the one who always tells me, did you check, you know, section whatever, and I go, oh, I didn't know, and it, it makes it really difficult for professionals to guide people, as well as people to help themselves. And so I think this is, and, and I think at previous meetings, Main Street reps have come and been really appreciative of the fact that we're taking on this initiative right now, because they're trying to work with the businesses on helping themselves look better, they have facade monies to go towards signage. But the, it's really hard to, the way it's currently written, to get results we want in a timely way, you know?
This is a complaint complaining for years about. So now we have one standardized facade thing that's, that's gonna, that's gonna fit all the compliances and whatever we gotta do, so. But it's for the entire town, we just tapped into this and did it for everyone in one shot.
For the commercial.
That's what I mean, you know, for, yeah, that, yeah.
And it's, it's just, I mean, it, it's a great opportunity to use the NPP funds to, to support this, but the other thing that I think it's so convoluted, it's so crazy that the design committee of Main Street and the zoning board and the, and the, all the people who have different input into this will sometimes look at the same document and.
And read something else.
Something completely different, and so there's conflict between the zoning board or the planning board or the zoning official and code or the nature design committee, right? And so by streamlining it, putting it all in one place, saying this is what our ordinance is, ideally, those sort of, you know, debates and conflicts will, will be set aside and we'll have, this is our sign, this is what you can understand, and this.
Smart move to get it done with NPP, so we don't have to pay.
Only led me down a rabbit hole of other places in our ordinance I would love Chris to tackle, but that's for another day.
When there's another free grant, grant, we can tap into.
And it has, it will have, hopefully, over time, a real visible impact on our commercial areas and we'll start to see an aesthetic that.
It would look, it, it's gonna, it's gonna benefit, especially with the, the development that we're hoping to come in play, you know? It, it will, I think it'll be a huge benefit to our town.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Main Street Highland Park a lot of credit, because they came armed, but the breadline markets for me. I was like, this is fantastic, and you already did half my work for me, so just taking it to the next step. And really acknowledging the work.
Oh, so we should cut your villain out.
You have to go through all of it.
Like, do we have any say, like, you know, marijuana stores are gonna start opening up? Like, I, while I support that, I don't support my son walking home from school and seeing, like, big neon.
In, in the cannabis legislation, there's actually restrictions. Very strict, so it's, that's just, that's not just state, that's also our local, right?
I'm just asking, because I was in another state, getting some. And now I was getting some medical tests done, and I saw some things on storefronts, and I'm like, I do not want that in my town.
It's, it's, the cannabis stores are very restrictive.
Okay.
If you go to, I mean, check out New Brunswick, the, it's very understated.
My friend's son owns that store, I knew. Yeah.
That's how most of them are, I think, so, but Times Square is totally different, you know? Not only that, I mean, it's just like, the, the signage is really, you know.
In your face, yes.
You can support everything in the world, but you're just like, that's a lot.
So this, but these regulate, I would like to think, whatever we come up with would be, you know, a cannabis business under the state and lawful rules also.
Yeah, the premium was to perceive any, really what we're doing here will affect that. But to your point, your concerns are being heard through the state standards.
Okay. Alrighty. Any other questions?
So when, when the draft gets done, and we hope, you look at it, you'll say, that's what that thing was, and, you know, hopefully, support.
Be warned, it will be a wall tax, but we'll try to offer a simple summary.
The key changes are, key changes, and it's just mostly.
Well, thank you very much. Excellent. We're looking forward to seeing it, because it's, it's been discombobulated for a long time.
And as we found, the two other ordinance that you pushed to December fifth.
The next meeting.
So we're, we're keen, when we find something, fix it, cheap fixes. So we're, we're keen, when we find something, fix it, cheap fixes, and make a tremendous impact right now.
Motion to adjourn? All in favor, I guess it's alright. Well, everyone, happy Thanksgiving. Be safe.